That if any member of the audience has a cellphone or other electronic device, that you please turn it off or turn the ringer to silent. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting is not disrupted. Consent calendar. Items one through five have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of this planning commissioner are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision. Are there any items one through five that staff would like removed?
No, thank you.
Are there any items one through five that any planning commissioner would like removed? Item four. And any items in one through three and item five that the audience would like removed? Chair would then look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, items one through three, and item five in accordance with staff recommendations. Rachel made the motion.
Second.
And Mike Goller seconded that motion. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four.
Good morning. Kip Harrington, Long Range Planning. Item number four is eighteen TP zero two one, which is the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two Rapid City Area Transportation Improvement Program, and this is the draft report. So this is a product we put out every year. The Transportation Improvement Program lists all the upcoming roadway construction projects for the next four years and identifies the associated funding with that. This spreadsheet here details all the federal funds that are programmed in the metropolitan planning area by year and also by improvement type, and also talks about public transportation as well. So you can see at the bottom right that there's approximately seventy-four million dollars worth of federal funds coming into this area over the next four years for transportation Put in some charts to make it a little more visual, breaking down the funding sources and then each different category by year, and broke down public transit as well. We also list all the regionally significant programs or projects that are not federally funded, and so you can see that Box elders got over three million dollars. Rapid City has about ten million dollars. Mead County about four million, and Pennington County about eight million dollars in local funds that are going into the project or the projects over the next four years. We put in operations and maintenance budgets to keep this fiscally constrained, and then this following is a list of projects, some of the highlights in this one, some of the bigger ones. In twenty twenty, the I ninety exit fifty-nine La Crosse Street interchange will be reconstructed at a cost of approximately thirteen million dollars. We've got a bunch of painting going on. The other big project in Rapid City is South Dakota two thirty-one, which is West Chicago, West Omaha, from Sheffer Street to Mountain View Road, and West Omaha Street, which is also South Dakota Highway forty-four from Mountain View to about Twelfth Street, and that will be widened all the way to six lanes all the way through Deadwood Avenue. And that's in twenty nineteen. And as you've seen, there's a bunch of utility work that's going on ahead of that. Other than that, it lists some more projects and then breaks down all the local projects as well through Rapid City CIP, public transit projects, airport projects, Box elders CIP program, Mead County five-year transportation projects, and the Pennington County Transportation Improvement Plan for five years as well. This is the draft report. Will probably be some changes, especially in the Rapid City CIP, and the state usually makes some changes to their program as well. We'll bring the final back in August for your approval. I'd also like to remind everybody that the state Transportation Improvement Program, AKA the STIP, is holding a public meeting. That's usually sometime around the end of July, and it's usually held at the Ram Cota, and we'll make sure everybody's aware of that when that date is actually scheduled. Can I answer any questions?
Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Kip, for the overview. I had a question, not a question so much, well, a question. In the cities program, you have an area in twenty eighteen that says East Boulevard, East North Street, from Saint Joe to Herman. They're going to reconstruct that whole section. Is that true for twenty eighteen?
I believe it'll be, bid will be let this year, as far as I know. We may want to ask our city engineer or somebody from engineering on that.
Todd?
Correct. The project is off for bid right now. The bid opening of June twenty-seventh. There'll be some work this year, mainly off-site of East Boulevard, East North. The reconstruction will happen in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty for the mainline work.
Okay. Okay, that's just a big stretch, and I just wanted people to know that that whole street will be under construction then for a couple of years.
Yep.
Am I correct? Okay. Thanks. Thanks for the overview, too. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Kip. The recommendation on this item is to approve the draft report of the Transportation Improvement Program for the years listed. I'd look for a motion for that. Karen made the motion to approve.
Second.
And Kurt seconded that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six.
Before you today is ordinance sixty-two sixty-two. To address a couple provisions in the sign code, I had a memo attached to the agenda that explained that these are being brought forward as part of a settlement agreement with Epic Outdoor Advertising. I'm not sure how many of you were on the zoning board of appeals back in twenty sixteen. The dates are kind of fuzzy, but there was a matter before the zoning board that ultimately went to court and was litigated somewhat. We did reach a settlement with Epic a couple months ago between the council and Epic related to that issue. One of the elements of the settlement agreement is to amend the sign code. So that's what this ordinance six-two-six-two is. It would make two major changes to the sign code. Well, really, only two changes. First, it would adopt an area along Interstate ninety that would allow larger signs. Currently, the sign code limits all signs to thirty feet in height and two hundred and fifty square feet. For this area along, within a hundred feet of the right-of-way of Interstate ninety, the signs could be forty feet tall, up from thirty feet, and six hundred and seventy-two square feet. The reason for that six hundred and seventy-two square feet is that apparently that's a standard size sign, so, as is two hundred and fifty square feet. So it would adopt that zone along the interstate for those larger and taller signs, and it would also alter the conditional use permit requirement for signs, for off-premise signs. We're talking only off-premise signs here. And while a conditional use permit would still be required for any new signs, currently the sign code says that any structural alteration to an existing sign also requires a conditional use permit. It would remove that requirement. So it would require a conditional use permit only for new signs, not for changes to existing signs. And then we also made an adjustment in the criteria for conditional use approval. Currently, it says that you look at the proposed sign because you're just approving the sign in front of you for the conditional use permit, but the criteria would be amended to allow you to think about any potential future sign. So if somebody comes in and proposes a smaller sign that's not digital, the planning commission could think about, what if this one goes digital? Because they would be allowed to do that once the conditional use permit is granted without coming back before the planning commission. So those are the changes that would be made to the sign code.
Thank you, Carla. I do have a light-up from Mike Kwasny.
Probably not surprised. I think this is a road that is really a bad road to go down. I do not think that we should have accepted what we did. I think the city of Rapid City is not doing what it takes to get sixty-six percent of the vote to count. I think at any opportunity, we need to try to uphold the vote of the people of our city, and I don't think we've done that. I think that we have a mall area that has no signage. Now there's an opportunity for a big sign to be right in front of it. I think that we are opening up a box that is really tough. You mentioned the digital signs that can be changed without having to go in front of us, and I think we are just opening up a can of worms, and I think it's a big mistake. I want to make sure I'm voiced that this is a problem, and I will guarantee we're going to have problems down the road because we have not done what it takes in the signage industry. They continue to push the limits, and they're making the rules, and I think we need to get a hold of this, and I think we need to address it. I think we need to take care of this problem before it becomes bigger. Thank you.
Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Carla, I understand this is the result of that lawsuit, and so this is something that we need to go forward and approve, and I don't see us making changes to this at all. Do you?
Well, I guess what I would like is a recommendation from you for council so that it can move forward to council.
Gotcha. Okay. Does council have a chance to make any changes at all?
It's an ordinance, so, you know, council has to have two readings of it and take public hearing, and so, you know, it wasn't done with the settlement agreement. The council, I think, has indicated their willingness to consider the ordinance, but it will move forward to that level.
Okay. Well, I read in there something about the fact that if one of the other parties don't agree or something, it changes, and that might go back then to a lawsuit again if that's the case.
Right, right. It would invalidate the settlement agreement, or not invalid. It would just make things complicated with the lawsuit, but I honestly don't think that that's something that you all need to consider.
Okay.
To me, that's more for the council because they approved the settlement agreement.
Gotcha.
So.
Okay. I have a question within the settlement itself.
Okay.
It said something about, there's also two billboards that are allowed to go up that haven't been erected right now, and Epic has to give two credit points for each one of those.
Right.
And that's part of that. It's not part of the ordinance, but it's part of the lawsuit or the settlement.
It's part of the settlement. That's right.
Does that leave Epic with any credits left at all?
I'm not sure how many credits they have.
Okay, because it seemed like they had several credits, and I'm just curious, I guess mostly for that.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to your question. I can't say definitively that they still have some signed credits. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not crazy about the lawsuit, you know, the length of it and all the thing that's going on, but I guess the council will finally make it settled, and it'll be done, and we'll move forward, but I appreciate the answers. Thank you.
Okay.
Kurt?
What happens if we don't approve it at Planning Commission?
I think it would go forward to the council with the recommendation for not approving it.
Okay. Thank you.
Eric, I saw your name up. Did you have a comment or question on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was basically just to ask what the ramifications were, should we not plan it? And I think that's already been addressed at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions or commenters chiming in. Look for a motion at that point.
I make.
Mike Kwasny made a motion to, what would that be, deny the ordinance amendments or not approve the ordinance amendments? Okay, to deny the ordinance amendments described in item six, and Eric seconded that motion. Vince, discussion on the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay. We're the Planning Commission. State makes the laws. We have ordinances here in the city. This litigation that the, that not even this owner of signs started, we've settled for a quarter of a million dollars, and now we're going to ignore the fact that we've come to a settlement, and we're going to simply say because of a vote that maybe the people that voted, sixty percent that voted, didn't know what they were voting for. Case in point, more than sixty percent just voted for the Civic Center. So I don't know if we're thinking this through. I think the staff has come up with a good recommendation, and we need to go forward with it. So for that case, I'm not agreeing with no vote on this.
Thanks, Vince. Further discussion on the motion? Karen?
Thank you. For me, I understand Mike's discussion about this, and I'm not a big billboard person anyway, so everybody knows that, too, but I think this is something that the council's going to have to make a decision on whether we say yes or no to it. I just want to acknowledge that I am in support of some of the things that Mike has said. I think this is something that the citizens of Rapid did not want to see, a lot more billboards, and I think it's going to be something that we are destroying some of the beauty of our area, and so morally, I feel strongly that I'd like to vote no on this just for that reason, but I also understand that it has to go forward, and I think the council will approve it, and I think it'll be settled. So I just want everyone to know what my no vote is going to be for, so, thanks.
Thanks, Karen. Mike?
Well, and the assumption's been that I'm anti-billboard. I'm really not. I just think that there needs to be some control, and we're heading down a road that is going to cause us a lot of problems when we start having, if we don't take care of the sign, our codes that we have in, and I would contend that the city has not necessarily gone to the state and done what it needs to do to be able to support what we want in our city. My fear, quite frankly, is we have an area between the base and here that is completely filled with signage. Now, we have addressed some of the distance between signs. I understand that, but we truly need to get a handle on this, and I just think we have to have a better handle before we start doing ordinances that create new opportunities to put up signs. And so that is truly why, I just think we need a better handle, and I think we need to send this to the city council with a recommendation to not approve this only from the standpoint that we need to get a handle on the sign codes. We need to truly, and we've done this for fifty years now, it's been a lot of years we've been trying to get a handle on the sign code, and we've never really addressed it, and we need to take care of this. We need to get something solid in the books so that we know where we're heading and so we can support what our citizens want. And I truly believe that we need to address this as a no vote, send it to the council. We have an opportunity as we plan forward. Let's truly plan. Let's get some sign codes in. Let's get some things that are hard and fast so that we can take care of what our citizens want, and as planning, we have that opportunity.
Justin?
Thank you. Forgive my ignorance, I guess, not having a lot of history of this thing, but did I hear that council already approved the settlement agreement and with that knew about this?
Yes, this was part of the settlement agreement, that we would bring forward this ordinance with these provisions.
Okay, so I'll just kind of reiterate both sides of this. I tend to agree with what Mike's saying in a lot of ways and the ideas and thoughts, but I do agree with Vince as far as, I'm going to side with that side of the vote because if it's already gone through council, it's a legal settlement. To me, there's a lot more wheels in motion than this commission, so I think if council has already approved it, approved the settlement, baked with this stipulation, I think it's their call. Now, it sounds like either way, it goes to council, whether it's our recommendation to or not to approve, so I don't know if that's necessarily overly relevant, but I would, I guess, side with Vince as far as the vote goes because I think if there's a legal settlement in place that council's a part of, that it's going to have to be their call, so, thanks.
Eric?
I agree with Karen that there's a beautification aspect to be considered with the billboards, and I see in the letter that the signage for South Dakota can be up to twelve hundred square feet.
That's the South Dakota state law related to signage along the interstate that isn't within a city that has a more restrictive rule.
So within the city, there's more restrictions, just outside of the city, they can be up to?
Twelve hundred square feet.
Does that require prior approval at this point, given the conditional use, that aspect of it? Are they going to have to come back and say, you know, we want a twelve hundred square foot sign outside of the city limits? Do they have to have that approval?
That wouldn't come to the city. That would, that's a good question. I don't know what the process for putting up a billboard along the interstate would be, if it would be a conditional use permit at the county. I'm not sure what those processes are. I'm only familiar, I'm mostly familiar with what's in the city.
Okay. I do agree that the voices of the people do need to be heard on this prior vote that they had, and it almost seems like this is, if it's already been approved by city council, that we're here basically to rubber stamp the issue. That's the way it just kind of seems to me.
If I could respond to that, Mr. Chair? I know that it probably seems that way, but council has to approve this at two readings. They can legally make any changes that they want to or are able to, so I guess I would not agree that it's a rubber stamp. I think that council, it might feel that way from you guys, from the planning commission, but council can decide, they can change their mind on this and say, no, we're not going to move forward, so.
Thank you.
Mike?
I think, and I'm not trying to throw you under the bus here, Carla. You made a comment there that I'm not sure on that question that was asked there, and that's the problem. We have not addressed the signage to the point where we know what it is that we can and cannot do. I think we need to address that. I think we need to take care of the signage. We need to know what's going in our city limits, whether it's on the interstate or not, and I think we need to take care of that. Now is the time. It's time to address it. It's not the time to pass new ordinances and send that message to the sign industry that they can do again whatever they want. I think it's important that we step up and we do a no vote, and we send to our council people that in planning, we have not done what it takes to know what this is going to do to our city, and we need to address that. You should be, we should be able to answer the question of whether or not twelve hundred and fifty-six square foot sign can go in. We should know that a digital sign is going to be able to be up along the interstate. We should know those answers, and that's all I'm really asking for, is that we are able to know the answers, and we address it, and we take care of those problems before we start passing these ordinances that says go to the sign industry. And that's what it feels like to me we're doing. We're saying, go ahead and go do what you want.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
I'm not sure what questions you are asking of me that I don't have answers to. I mean, the answer to can digital billboards go along the interstate? The answer is yes. If that's true today, that's true under these ordinances. If the ordinance is passed, they can be six hundred and seventy-two square feet and forty feet tall. As far as new signage along the interstate, our building official has done a survey because really that's limited by spacing, how far the signs can be apart based on what's there today. My understanding is that there is maybe one area that a new sign can go up, but otherwise we have all the signs that we can unless we change the spacing, which is not a proposal here. So if you're talking specifically about the interstate zone, I think the change that would be made with this ordinance would be the signs that are there today could be increased to six hundred and seventy-two square feet, could be increased in height to forty feet without a conditional use permit. And signs that are elsewhere in the city, structural alterations could be made to those without a conditional use permit review. That's the effect of this ordinance, and if you have additional questions for me, I'm more, I don't have all the answers.
Sure. And I appreciate.
But hopefully, I can get you the answers that you feel like you need. I don't think you're going to vote for the ordinance, but if there are questions that are in your mind, please feel free to ask me.
Well, didn't Eric ask a question, though, just now about the larger sign? I was confused.
I think that was outside of city limits, and I don't know the answer to that. I don't know how the county, if the county requires a conditional use permit in Mead County or Pennington County.
Okay.
I'm not familiar with those rules.
Sure.
I could sure look them up, but I don't know what they are today.
Sure. Okay, I understand. Maybe I misunderstood what he was presenting, but I just don't know that we have the answers in place with our present sign codes, so I think this is an opportunity to send a message. Let's get a handle on this, and that's what I hope we can do with a no vote. I don't think it changes. I think the city council's going to take, and whether or not there's a lawsuit, I don't know that this, I would challenge us to step forward and not necessarily just say yes because there's a lawsuit in place. I think the challenge is to really get a handle on our signs and really do what it takes to go forward here.
Vicki? Comments on your clarity?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think that Carla's discussion did explain a little bit, too. I think, Mr. Kwasny, that earlier when you had talked about the aesthetic impact of billboards from the base into Rapid City, so much of that is outside of the jurisdiction of the city, and it's only for that property that's within the city limits that our sign code is applicable. And of course, there are state regulations on those state highways that couple with the city's regulations. And for a point of clarity on the history of our sign code, since I've been here, there have been two separate committees formed, and there were interest groups from both sides of the issue, as well as staff, that sat on these committees, and they met for months and months and months. And the code that we have today is very black and white. It's a quite lengthy code for a sign code, and it does spell out in great detail what's allowed on-premise, off-premise, what requires a conditional use permit. I certainly don't want anyone to think that we haven't put that energy into it. I don't know that staff agrees with all components of it, but remember, this came forward as a part of a committee. The changes that Carla has presented today, those two changes, is in addition to the code as it stands today. So they're, great conversation on the aesthetic appeal. I think that in the county, most of their signage that is of the size we're talking about is a conditional use permit, if I can remember back in the day when I was a county planner, and that would go before a public hearing through the county board of commissioners and their planning commission.
Thanks, Vicki. So we have a motion on the floor to deny this ordinance amendment. Rachel, comments on the motion?
Yeah, I'll be brief because I know we've definitely talked this to death. I'm glad that Carla kind of came in her own defense, and Vicki talked about it, too. You know, I don't think it's really fair to expect Carla to know something that's outside the city limits. That's not really her job. But to me, and maybe I have a misunderstanding here, we're coming to this settlement agreement because of state law. Is that correct? And if so, maybe the key isn't really going through city council and saying, well, city council needs to oppose it, planning commission needs to oppose it. Maybe the key is actually contacting your legislators and saying, hey, this is a big deal, that the entire city of Rapid City, like a huge percentage of the city of Rapid City thinks this is a big deal, let's address this. Maybe this isn't the right venue, so, thank you.
Vince?
Oh, yes, I just, I didn't need to defend Carla. She defended herself just fine, and obviously Vicki defended the staff fine, too, because this is not something that just came up. It's not new, and Rachel was perfectly on spot-on with this. I think we're looking at a position here where we're talking about the way we do business here in Rapid City and the signals that we send to the community outside as well as inside. At this point in time, the homework has been done. It's, we're grading the homework on the staff, and the staff did fine homework trying to save the citizens money, trying to save the taxpayers' money, and put the onus on where it needs to be. Now, the city council still has a decision to make, so what we're simply saying is that the staff's recommendation has, is the right approach to how we settle this issue, so that, I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thanks, Vince. Mike, comments on your motion?
I had no way, wanted to make it personal to you, Carla, on that comment. Okay, it was more of a general. Okay, it was more of a general, that the knowledge that we have, we have spent a lot of time in the city with these different board, and we, and in my opinion, the sign code is too big, but it's not defined, and therein lies the problem. It doesn't have enough definition. It has too many but if, whereas if we could, it gives conditions, and I don't think that we have a hard-nosed, and I go back to the support of the 66, I don't think, I think it could be shorter and more defined, and that's really where I think it stands. Vicki, the, the city has done due diligence. We keep going after it, but we keep making it larger, and we don't address the true issues, in my opinion. I think that we have, I, I think this is an opportunity to just say, it's time to really get the sign code what it needs to be, and I think we have an opportunity here. And I think we have other sign companies that are going to come on board and start saying different things, and we're just, we're in the middle of the sign industry. They're at war trying to get sign space. We need to define what sign space they can have so that we can stop the war, and that's an opportunity here. I in no way think, I am business. I do not want to take business from a business. I think it's important that businesses do their thing. So the no vote doesn't necessarily do that. It just says, we can step up and we can make sure that we have the right codes in place. That's all I'm really asking for. Please, please vote no, that's what I ask.
Karen?
Thank you. Just one last comment from me too. I believe that there is a, a place for signs, and as a business person, I think that everybody needs that ability to put signs up for their business. And I, I guess from me, over the last several years, my opposition to billboards has been from the aesthetic part of, of our community, and that and the, and the electronic signs who they say they aren't going to scroll and stuff, and then, and then they do anyway. And, and there's, the regulation of signs, once they're up is, is difficult, and, and I've talked with the building inspectionists, it's hard to get out there and measure it and do all that kind of stuff to make sure that they're in compliance. So I have some feelings about, of how the sign industry takes care of themselves, and so my, my vote is not against signage as a whole or against business people, it's just on the, the billboards, number one, and how they're regulated. So I just want people to understand my no vote is for that, so, thanks.
Thanks, Karen. So the motion on the floor is to deny this ordinance amendment. So a yes vote will be to deny, a no will be against the motion to deny.
Mm-hmm.
Just to clarify. If there's any more discussion? Don't see any. All those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
No. Can we do a roll call?
Pardon me, I don't have a sheet in front of me, so give me just a moment.
No.
Bowman?
Yes.
Caesar?
No.
Galaher?
No.
Her?
Yes.
Hughes?
Ottenbacher?
Yes.
Kozni?
Yes.
Ben Greffishy?
No.
Vadel?
No.
My apologies. Ottenbacher, I have, I have to abstain from voting. My apologies.
What was your vote?
He was yes. Okay. So the motion fails. Motion fails.
So the motion fails, and Eric Ottenbacher is an alternate today, not a voting member?
That's right.
That's the reason? Okay.
We have nine voting members, 10 of you are present, so our apologies, Eric. It was a five to four vote, the motion failed.
John?
I'd make a motion to send it forward with no recommendation.
John made the motion to send this ordinance amendment forward to the city council with no recommendation, and Mike Kozni seconded that motion. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Roll call again, I think, I couldn't hear.
Braun?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Caesar?
Yes.
Galaher?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Her?
Yes.
Kozni?
Yes.
Ben Greffishy?
No.
Vadel?
No.
I have seven to two.
So the motion to send this item on to the city council with no recommendation passes seven to two. That takes us to item seven. This one, I'm going to pass the gavel off to Kurt today. I have to abstain from this one due to a project on this property that I proposed last year.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, this is my first time doing this, so bear with me. Vicki?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So item number seven is a preliminary subdivision plan to subdivide property located at the northwest corner of Creek Drive and East St. Patrick Street into four lots. We had a presentation on this item at your last meeting. One of the developers, Jim Letner, was in the audience. He wanted to visit with you about some of the stipulations of approval, as well as some of the policy that the city currency, the city currently implements regarding using the same design standards when we're looking at development for those streets that a developer is going to construct versus those streets that exist that their property is adjacent to. Todd Pekosh with Public Works met with Jim after the meeting to go over the stipulations of approval. We did come to somewhat of a consensus on that, and the staff report has been revised as noted in bold. Jim also met with me, and we went over what's required for a site plan to demonstrate that the lot that's being created with the existing commercial structure has sufficient parking, landscaping, and that the signage is actually located on the lot that's going to be planted separate from the balance of the property, and I think we can find some solution on all of that. On the separate issue of the general standard that the city has in applying the infrastructure design criteria manual to adjacent, existing, dedicated right-of-way where the streets have been improved to some standard, similarly to those that are being dedicated and built internal to a property. There was a group that met on Tuesday. I was not a part of that meeting. I had a conflict, however, it's my understanding that it was a successful meeting, and that going forward, it's something that a committee is going to look at, and we will certainly advise you if that should change in the future. For today's item, it's important to note that the stipulations of approval have been revised to eliminate a second water main along East St. Patrick Street. We had said that, that he needed to do that or seek an exception. It was anticipated he would seek the exception, it would be granted. However, in looking at that requirement, when you're on an arterial street and you have to provide a water main on both sides, because we don't want you boring through pavement to provide a service line, it, it was a great conversation to have with Jim. We do look at it a little differently now. If you're on the west side of a street, and that's the same side of the street that the second water main is void, then you would be responsible to put it. But if there is a water main on that side of the street already, and it's when the property develops on the east side that they would need to then have that water main so they don't have to bore into the pavement, then we're not going to require you to get that exception. So you'll see that in the staff report, that requirement has been struck. There was quite a bit of discussion about Creek Drive and what should be required, and it's a collector's street requirement to pay for improvements on an arterial street. And you'll see that that stipulation has been revised to say that there is oversized cost in the requirement set forth. Staff is recommending that Creek Drive be improved to a 36-foot wide paved surface, and the requirement for a collector's street is 24 feet with a 32-foot width at the intersection of Creek and St. Pat for a turn lane. We're of the opinion that based on the traffic that is anticipated in this area, 36 feet is the right dimension, having full, full three lanes, but the balance of that improvement is an oversized expenditure, and that's an item that can be requested, and council acts on those on a regular basis. So I believe that the, the developer is in agreement with these stipulations. We are recommending that this item be approved as noted with the revisions. There was an email that I received yesterday from Mr. Letner, and it's been handed out to you on the dais. He wants to go on public record that he still wants the city to look at separating the review requirements for new streets and existing streets. And again, that's an, an ongoing project now. If you have any questions, let me know.
Well, I don't see any speaker requests, so look for a motion. Mike and Rachel? So the motion is to approve with stipulations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Good job, Kurt.
That one was easy. And I'm back. Item number eight.
Item number eight is 18 PD 020, an initial plan development overlay request to allow a 40-unit apartment building. Property is located northeast of the intersection of Bernice and Neal Street. It's zoned office commercial district, and there's a planned development designation on the property. What that means is before they can get a building permit, they'll have to go through another process like this for the final plan development, as this is just an initial plan development. Currently, the property is void of a structural development. There are apartments to the south and southwest. They're currently plating the property into a lot. They've gotten through development engineering plans, and I believe final plat will be next. Future land use is urban neighborhood, and you see Elkvale Road to the west as an entrance corridor, and then again, where it's located within the city, and Elkvale Road being a arterial street, and Neal Street being a collector's street. Here we have a, a site plan of the proposed apartment building. Again, the reason this is, you're seeing this is because it's in a planned development designation. They are requesting one exception to increase the height from what is allowed of three stories and 35 feet to three stories and 37 feet, seven inches. So that's two feet, seven inches that they're asking for an increase in. On this site plan, you can see they're showing increased setbacks from that north property line and the south property line, so that's providing a buffer for that extra height. We've also seen similar exception requests in the area. The property to the south was granted an exception to allow a height of 40 feet, and here we have the proposed elevations. Again, it's three stories. It's the architectural detail on the building that's creating that height of 37 feet, seven inches. Staff is recommending that the exception be granted and that the initial plan development be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report. Are there any questions for staff?
Thanks, Fletcher.
Or did you want to go through pictures? Sorry.
Up to you. Mike?
Okay, thank you. I guess in the past, is, hasn't it been that we, for signage purposes, we approved the extra height that wasn't necessarily for the building itself? Isn't that what our past has been? I don't know who I need to ask that question of.
I believe you're remembering the Glow Hotel where the height was on the top of the building, and thus, they were asking for an exception to increase that height because the building was higher, but that was also in general commercial district and was a hotel, and it was allowed additional height. But this one is specifically for the height of the building, not any signage.
Right. And, and I guess, do we have a history where we've done it for the building height in?
Yes, as I noted, the property to the south was also granted an exception.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
For 40 feet, so additional two and a half feet more than what they're asking for today.
Okay, thank you.
I'd actually say this is something we might want to look at the code. You know, we've gotten into steeper pitches on roof lines being an architectural function, and it seems like these three-story apartment buildings, nearly all of them we see, we end up looking at a height exception, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Chair?
Vicki though? Or Fletcher?
The reason we're seeing this today is because it's in a planned development designation, so they have to go through a plan development that comes before you. So they're asking for that height exception. Reality is, it's less than a 20% increase, and we do have a process where through a zoning exception, you can get an additional height up to 20%. So that would be a normal route for this, but because it's in the planned development designation, that's why we're seeing it.
Gotcha. Thank you. Vicki?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do understand your statement. We have a provision within 1750 that speaks to items that don't require an exception, like a steeple on a church, and that is something that we will visit about internally to see if there are some other architectural features or designs that don't require the exception at all based on some of the trends that we're seeing today. You've seen several height exceptions on hotels. They like to put some feature above the entrance so that if you're driving next to the property, the high point of the roof line is where you usually know that the front door is going to be. So in many exception requests, you've seen that. I would like to add that in looking at the stipulations of approval, we did not have a provision in there that is requesting that you grant the exception. So with that, I would like to add a stipulation that says that an exception is hereby granted to allow a maximum height of 37 feet, seven inches, in lieu of 35 feet, so that when you do take action on that, you're actually granting the exception as well, if that's your desire.
It was 37.7?
37 feet, seven inches.
Oh, seven inches. Okay. No motion on the floor yet, but motion makers, please keep that in mind. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that our ordinances are, are good the way they are. They give you the opportunity to make exceptions if it's needed, and, and I know that it seems like we, we are granting a lot of those, and, and you know, and that's, that's all right. And in the ones that don't come through a plan development, the staff has the opportunity to grant for those things that, that happen like that, so I don't mind that. I think this particular property, there's a hillside behind it, so if I'm not mistaken, and I think that helps the height. Is that correct? Fletcher? There's a hillside behind it?
If we take a look, it's, that's looking into the property from the, to the north, so.
So the property slopes north? Up?
And that's the, the other apartments that have the 40 feet to, to the south.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike?
I would make the motion to accept. I think it's a nice-looking property. I think they, they're putting some-
to allow a maximum height of 37 feet, seven inches in lieu of 35 feet. So that when you do take action on that, you're actually granting the exception as well, if that's your desire.
It was 37.7?
37 feet, seven inches.
Oh, seven inches. No motion on the floor yet, but motion makers, please keep that in mind. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that our ordinances are, are good the way they are. They give you the opportunity to make exceptions if it's needed. And, and I know that it seems like we, we are granting a lot of those and, you know, and that's, that's all right. And in the ones that don't come through a planned development, the staff has the opportunity to grant for those things that, that happen like that. So I don't mind that. I think this particular property, there's a hillside behind it, so if I'm not mistaken, and I think that helps the height. Is that correct, Fletcher? There's a hillside behind it?
If we take a look, it's, that's looking into the property from the, to the north.
So... So the property slopes north? Up?
And that's the, the other apartments that have the 40 feet to, to the south.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike?
I would make the motion to accept. The, I think it's a nice-looking property. I think they, they're putting some nice apartments out there and I would make the motion to agree with this.
With the added exception for 37?
Yes, with the added exception.
All right. And Vince seconded that motion. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Any discussion items, staff items today? All right. Tim?
Well, good morning. I kind of want to take advantage of the opportunity this morning. Guns and hoses, blood drive is currently going on. And since there's no police department representative here this morning, I would certainly encourage anyone that has a desire or would participate to go up and donate blood on behalf of the fire department. So, anyway, other than that, have a great day.
Is that over at United Blood Services?
It is up at the Rushmore Mall.
Rushmore Mall, okay.
There's plenty of goodies up there, so go up and enjoy some time up there.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else other than a motion to adjourn?
I made that motion.
Okay, Karen made the motion to adjourn. And Mike seconded that motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? We're adjourned.